Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodion Moore's Pradium, Antay Kaloraro. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Coastal Court. Today is Class 158. Class 158. What did we learn in Class 157? Well, right now, we're going over what's commonly known as the Rule of Law, right? But why are we studying the Rule of Law? Well, we're trying to decolonize. Always remember that when you study law, what is the purpose and intent of studying law? Well, it's for you to be able to free yourself, right? So, one of the things I'd like to say to the Moors is that we have to admit to ourselves as Moors that 99.9% of the Moors are still colonized people. And why is 99.9% of all Moors, anyone who says they're a Moor, why are they still colonized? It's because they never understood the Rule of Law. You see, that is the measuring tool. What is the metrics here? How do you measure whether you know whether Moors understood law or not? Well, you measure by the simple fact of whether are you still colonized or have you decolonized, you see? So, the Rule of Law lets all the Moors know whether you understood law or not. And the Moors are, 99% of them are still colonized people. Less than 1% of all the Moors have started to do process of decolonization by utilizing the enforcement of the Rule of Law. You see, we're starting to not only understand the Rule of Law, but we're also understanding what law rules. And Moors never understood which law actually ruled. And the litmus test of that is the fact that Moors are still colonized. That tells you, Moors never understood what law rules. And now, we're starting to study, right? Because ANPAC Study Session is an educational platform. Well, what is the true purpose and intent of ANPAC Study Session? Well, it's about decolonization. How can we ever decolonize if we don't study law? The only way to decolonize, you must understand, is all about the Rule of Law, right? Because the pen will put an end to colonists and obstructionists. But what about your pen? Your pen must be used based in the factors of law, the principles of law, right? The practice of law, right? To understand the Rule of Law. And then, after that, understanding which law rules. Well, the next question is, okay, what's the subject matter? If you want to talk about law, then you must tell me the subject matter. Because once you tell me the subject matter, that will tell me the subject matter jurisdiction. Who has jurisdiction to be able to settle the subject matter? If it's a dispute or controversies between two parties, who has the subject matter jurisdiction? Meaning, whose laws and whose courts get to settle the dispute? That's the question. And that's how I know the Moors have not been studying the Rule of Law. Moors have to start understanding the distinction between public law and private law. Public law is the law of the state. Private law is all the laws that are private between you and some other corporation or association, right? Organization or group. Public law comes from what? The state and the state officials. Public law comes from the Constitution. We start learning about that in Class 157. We start understanding what? The five elements of law. What type of law? Public law, the five elements of public law, not private law. So, what are the five elements of public law? There's international law, treaty law, fundamental law, statutory law, and common law. Those are five basic elements of public law. Public law rules over all private law. And what is it that the Moors have been specializing in for decades? They've been specializing in studying private law instead of specializing and trying to enhance their knowledge base in public law. The Moors have become masters of private law. And private law is inferior to public law. Therefore, public law is superior over private law. And this is why we have failed as a people. Because we don't know the distinction between public law and private law. So, anyone who's serious about decolonization and self-government and self-determination will study public law. And public law has five basic elements of law. And what are the five basic elements again? International law, treaty law, fundamental law, statutory law, and common law. Those are basic fundamentals of law that Moors know nothing about. But now, we're learning. We're well on our way. We're at varying stages of advancement. We are no longer buffering. We're no longer in the halfway house. We're no longer in the twilight zone. We're no longer dealing with the Piscean era. We're moving on to Aquarius, with or without you. That's what people got to understand. The Empire Morocco, his Majesty Sultan, and the Moors government is moving forward. You must understand this. It's time for everybody to start studying law. All right, let's get into the class. As the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution because the Constitution is what? Paramount. What does paramount mean? First. So, how are you ever going to advance as a people and you don't even have a Constitution? But what type of Constitution? Public law Constitution, not your private law Constitution of your corporation or your organization. It's the public law of a state constitution. And it's not a state constitution under guise of being some charter because you got Moors out there running around talking about, "I got a state constitution." It's a charter. Really? You're just going to co-mingle the two and think that's sufficient. This is the litmus test. Moors have delayed their own justice. They never knew what the hell they was talking about because they did not take the time to study public law. The Constitution's public law of what? The state. So, right here, you got the Constitution of Alodion Moore's Pradium, Antay Kaloraro, as an example. Because all the Moors will need their own internal Constitution that comes under the Constitution of what? The Constitution of Empire Morocco. This is the Constitution for the Empire Morocco. It has 106 arms. This right here is just a cover page, right? At the same time, as an example, ANPAC, as an internal state of the Empire Morocco, also has 106 arms. But ANPAC, as an example, comes under the protections, it comes under the umbrella of the mother state, the national state, the country, the country known as the Empire of Morocco, all right? Let's move on. Here's the national flag of the country. It's about the country. What's the country mean? That's the highest status of the state. Because a country can have several internal states within it. But when you're talking treaties, who is the first person in law that has a right to enforce the treaty? Well, it's the country. And the country has a national flag. So, this is the Empire Morocco's flag. It has seven points of interest. It's a circle seven, national flag for the Empire Morocco, right? We learned that the top green stripe represents what? International law and treaty law. Because international law does what? It governs treaties. The bottom green stripe represents what? Moroccan law. And the five-pointed green star represents what? Love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. That's called culture. All people have culture. And one of the cultures of the Moors is love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. But those cultural words mean absolutely nothing if you can't protect it. What protects your culture? It is the state. So, when your culture is being infringed on, what do you use to protect your rights, to protect your culture? You see, the five principles of love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice is protected by what? International law, treaty law, and Moroccan law. You see, it's protected right in the middle. It's protected by law. What is the red representing? Consign unity. Because the Constitution acts as what? A will, a trust, a deed. So, the next generation of the bloodline of Moroccans will carry on the Constitution, the obligations of governing the great enterprise that's governed by the Empire Morocco. But our bloodline, the red, means absolutely nothing without the state. And our culture means nothing without the protections of the state and the state's laws. And what laws does the state have? Okay, let's take it to the board. The state has what type of laws? Does the state recognize what? International law? Does the state recognize what? Treaty law? Does the state recognize what? Fundamental law of the Constitution? Does the state recognize statutory law? And does the state recognize this common law? And all that is embodied in this one flag. Seven principles of law that protects our culture of the five-pointed star of love, truth, peace, freedom. And then, there's justice. That must be understood. Let's continue. All right, so, we talked about Constitution, the national flag. Okay, now, you talk about the internal government. No use to having a Constitution and you don't have three branches of government to do what? Protect the rights of the Constitution. So, what do we have up here? We have the Empire Morocco. We have a little bit of a tier structure, right? So, first of all, the Empire Morocco was the country, is the national state, is the mother state. So, it's the external sovereign independent state. Not dependent, but independent state. The Sultan is head of state. Then, you've got the executive branch. You got a prime minister who oversees what? He's the head of government. The prime minister is head of government. Then, you've got the legislative branch. You got the Speaker of the House. The Speaker is head of the House for legislative acts. Then, you've got the judicial branch. You got a Chief Judge that oversees the other associate judges. You got three branches of the state. This is the Moors in the absence of. Now, because of that, now, we have a state, head of state, three branches of government. Now, we can become what? Signatory powers or contracting parties to what? Treaties. Because who can only be parties to a treaty? Only the state. Well, tell me the name of the state. It's Empire Morocco. That's the name of the state. That's the person in international law. There's only one person that matters. There's only one person that matters. That's the Empire Morocco. The Empire Morocco is a person in international law. This one person represents all of us as Moors. Without her, there is no us. All that matters is this one person, our mother. It's all that matters. All the rest of us come underneath her. Without her, there is no us. So, she represents the state. Listen. In Class 157, I was giving the Moors teasers. Kept saying, "We're going to read Resolution 1514 of 1960 out loud." Did we ever get to it? No. Why not? We were building up. First, we had to do a class on the fundamentals of law, the Rule of Law. We had to do fundamentals on what law rules. The next question, okay, well, then, tell me the subject matter based upon how we determine which law we use. So, once you tell me the subject matter, the subject matter will set for the jurisdiction. Because the jurisdiction says whose laws and whose courts gets to settle the dispute. So, today, we'll read Resolution 1514, and I promise, we're reading. Because Resolution 1514 is a treaty. And for the record, the Empire Morocco and his Majesty Sultan assisted us with becoming contracting parties to this treaty on July 6, 2024. And we deposited and gave notification to the United Nations Secretariat on July 15, 2024. We also gave notification to the United States to let them know we became signatory parties, contracting parties to this treaty in July 2024. Now, we can enforce it with full powers. But who can enforce it? The duly appointed officials of the state. All right, so, today, we'll read it, right? So, what date did it come out? So, Resolution 1514 was adopted and put into law on December 14, 1960. So, that means this treaty been out for 65 years. And the Moors Americans, the Pan-Africans, the African-Americans, and everybody who been seeking liberation, never read this out loud and then turn around and put into what? Full observation and application. You know why nobody could use it all these years? They call themselves copper-colored people. Because they didn't start with the first step. What's the first step? Her, the state. Without the state, there are no rights. You must have a state. And in international law, they refer to the state, and sometimes, they refer to it as a country. Why did they use the word country? Because that's an old-school word, traditional word, that represented what? The mother state, and all the states come underneath her. And this is why no black people and no Moors Americans and no Pan-Africans and nobody of any other group, association, corporation, anything you call yourself, this is why you never got liberation because you didn't start with her, the Constitution, state constitution. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to read the preamble. It has 12 paragraphs. And we're going to go back and do our interpretations. Then, we're going to read over the seven articles. Then, we'll go back and do our interpretations. That way, all the Moors have full comprehension, okay? Now, keep in mind, it's a very powerful treaty. It's undefeated. Every time indigenous people establish a state and they start to enforce treaty rights because their state's a party to the treaty, now, they can force it. It has never been defeated by colonists. They've never been able to work around it, never. This treaty has more wins than mayhem. This treaty has been used at least 84-plus times, including all the states of Africa, all the islanders around planet Earth have been using Resolution 1514 from the United Nations. We're talking about that today. Who gave indigenous people the right to decolonize? It was the United Nations, all right? Okay, so, let's get into the 12 paragraphs of the preamble. Then, we get into seven articles of the treaty. We'll bring it all together, and then, we'll move on and figure out, okay, how do we enforce it? It's one thing to read it. It's one thing to comprehend it. The next question is, how do you have full observation and application of the treaty? That's the next level of the Moors. The Moors got to level up. Let's get started. Okay, let's start with the title. Brother Drake?
Resolution adopted by the General Assembly, 1514, Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples.
Okay, let's pause right there. So, right in the title, before we even start reading the preamble, we got to break down the title. The title says, "Declaration on the Granting of Independence." To who? Colonial countries and its peoples. Do you see the sequential order? Well, what came first technically? Technically speaking, what came first? The Declaration. Well, who gave the Declaration? It was the General Assembly. Well, who was the General Assembly? All the member states of what? The Charter of the United Nations. So, when you go back to its origin, it started with the General Assembly members who granted independence to all indigenous people. What did they grant? They granted what? Declaration on granting of independence, not dependence. They didn't grant dependence. They granted independence to colonial countries and people. So, what came first? Did people come before the word country? Or did country come before the word people? So, all this time, the Moors been trying, all their efforts has been about people, but they never established the abstract commonly known as the country, i.e., the state, first. She comes first. The people were supposed to establish a state constitution, not a church constitution. State constitution. Let me ask the question. Let's read it one more time. I ask the question, listen. "The Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples." Did it say Declaration or Granting of Independence to your church? No. Will you grant it powers through your corporation? No. Your association? No. Your group? No. It's the granting of independence to a country. This is why I say, "Moors don't follow instruction." We delayed our own justice. This came out 65 years ago. We're just at the title alone. Where's the country? What's the name of it? Because Moors run around saying they're Americans. Then, what's the name of your state? That's the question. Because the people are named after what? The land, and land named after the people. And they keep saying it's Morocco, then they call themselves Americans. You ever heard somebody from a country say, "Uh, yeah, this is Germany, and we call ourselves Americans?" No, if you're from Germany, you're German. Moors are saying they're Americans, and simultaneously, say, "This is Morocco." Make it make sense. Listen, I'm taking my time. It's a Declaration on the Granting of Independence to colonial. That's the key word, colonial. So, they're saying these are colonized countries. Therefore, it's doing what? It's implying that the country is colonized. Therefore, it must mean their colonizers are utilizing their laws and their courts to keep this country and its people what? Oppressed under a colonizer's laws and courts. So, now, the people have the right to be what? Independent from the colonizers what? Laws and courts. But if you don't establish your own state and three branches of government, then it will be mayhem, anarchy, because there's no laws and no courts to maintain the Rule of Law amongst the indigenous people who now are declaring themselves as being independent. Let me give you an example. Moors are running around talking about, "We individual Moors. I'm standing on my square." Yeah, all by yourself. And this is why it's anarchy and mayhem amongst the Moors because they're all operating by themselves. There's no Rule of Law. What law rules that maintains what? Order amongst Moors. It didn't exist. And I ain't talking about your church rules either. That's private law. Miss me with all that. I'm talking public law. Where is it amongst the Moors? It did not exist. We got to start telling the truth. Listen. So, in the title, "Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Countries first, then people, but people establish the abstract country and invest all the power into the state and the government that way, all the people now can abide by the same equivalent laws and rules." And once you do that, you vest all that into what? Into the Constitution. Now, the Constitution has consistent laws and rules that become what? Repeatable, right? Duplicatable and transferable to the next generation of Moors. Because you create well-settled principles. Moors never had it before. You got civic Moors and temple Moors arguing amongst themselves. Then, they turn around and argue with who? The Nation Islam and the Pan-Africans and the Hebrew Israelites and Indians. And you got all those names I just said. You know what they all represent? Dwarfs. Dwarfs arguing about amongst themselves about who's the tallest. Absolutely irrelevant because none of them are talking about what? A country. None of them are talking about decolonization on how to emerge as a sovereign and independent state. What do all of them, those groups I just mentioned, have in common? What's the common denominator amongst civic Moors, temple Moors, Pan-Africans, Hebrew Israelites? People call themselves, "I'm a sovereign, citizen, Cherokee soul." What they all have in common? They all claiming private law. That's why they're losing. Their dwarfs arguing amongst themselves about who's the tallest, and it's absolutely irrelevant. You wasted your time for decades. Let's move on. Taking our time. Okay, let's get into the read. Okay, so, right at the top, who's addressing this? It says, "The General Assembly." So, it's a declaration from who? The General Assembly of the United Nations. The United Nations is helping Moors to decolonize. But Moors turn around saying, "United Nations is the devil." But yet, the United Nations is trying to help you to decolonize. But Moors turn around saying the United Nations is the devil, but yet the United Nations is trying to help you to decolonize. To get you away from the lies you've been taught by your so-called master teachers. Let's get started. Okay, uh, Brother Drake, we're gonna read the whole preamble, then we're gonna come back and break it down, okay? Let's get started.
Alright, the General Assembly. Mindful of the determination proclaimed by the peoples of the world in the Charter of the United Nations to reaffirm faith and fundamental human rights, and the dignity and worth of the human person, and the equal rights of men and women and nations of large and small, and to promote social progress and better standards of life and larger freedom. Conscious of the need for the creation of conditions of stability and well-being and peaceful and friendly relations based on respect for the principles of equal rights and self-determination of all peoples and of universal respect for and observance of human rights and fundamental freedoms for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion. Recognizing the passionate yearning for freedom in all dependent peoples and the decisive role of such peoples in the attainment of their independence, aware of the increasing conflicts resulting from the denial of or impediments in the way of the freedom of such peoples which constitute a serious threat to world peace. Considering the important role of the United Nations in assisting the movement for independence and trust in non-self-governing territories. Recognizing that the peoples of the world urgently desire the end of colonialism in all its manifestations, convinced that the continued existence of colonialism prevents the development of international economic cooperation, impedes the social, cultural, and economic development of dependent peoples and militates against the United Nations' ideal of universal peace. Affirming that peoples may, for their own ends, freely dispose of their natural wealth and resources without prejudice to any obligations arising out of international economic cooperation based upon the principle of mutual benefit and international law, believing that the process of liberation is irresistible and irreversible and that in order to avoid serious crisis, an end must be put, must be put to colonialism and all practices of segregation and discrimination associated therewith. Welcoming the emergence in recent years of a large number of dependent territories into freedom and independence and recognizing the increasingly powerful trends towards freedom in such territories which have not yet attained independence. Convinced that all peoples have an inalienable right to complete freedom, the exercise of their sovereignty, and the integrity of their national territory. Solemnly proclaims the necessity of bringing to a speedy and unconditional end colonialism in all its forms and manifestations and to this end declares that.
Alright, thank you very much. So that's the end of the reading of the preamble. Now, the preamble was very powerful. Always remember that the preamble was the first page of the contract. You must read the first page. It gives you the proper what? Context. Concept. It puts in proper context and concept about why the articles were necessary. The articles that you read are supporting the preamble. Alright, now, I'm gonna go back and break it down, but let's start right here where they ended. It's very important. Says right here solemnly proclaim. Well, who solemnly proclaim? The General Assembly members. Who are the General Assembly members? The members of the United Nations. Who are the members of the United Nations? All the member states of planet Earth. So states are proclaiming, right? Solemnly. They taking an oath, a vow, a promise. They proclaim, they, they proclaiming this. They proclaim the necessity of bringing to a speedy and unconditional end of colonialism in all its forms and manifestations. So who's giving their word they're gonna bring an end to colonialism? The member states. Did it say the indigenous people gonna bring to an end colonialism? No, it didn't say indigenous people. It says the General Assembly members are going to do it. With the assistance of who? The colonized people who understand the due process of checking the right boxes to establish their country first. And then from there, establishing what? The government and becoming party signatory powers to treaties so they can enforce treaties. And the internal state government starts to then write laws as well to govern its own people at the same time protect its integrity of its own territory. So the United Nations can't do nothing to help us until we were willing to help ourselves first. First, we have to create the state. Then the United Nations could help us, cause the United States is a state on state relations. Without a state, the Moors could not get into relations with the United Nations. They couldn't help us, cause we were missing a very important component. That was a requirement that was what? Paramount first, and all the negotiations started with the state. Okay, let's go to the top, break it down, before we even get into the seven articles. Alright. So from the top, it's the Resolution fifteen fourteen of December fourteenth of nineteen sixty. The Declaration on the Granting of Independence to colonial countries and its peoples, right? It says the General Assembly is declaring this. Mindful of the determination proclaimed by the peoples. So who's proclaiming? First, it says the General Assembly members are granting independence, but then the people have to assist. You see what's happening? It's a partnership. It says mindful of the determination proclaimed by the people. The people gotta proclaim that what? They're colonized. They must do it through what? A Declaration of Independence the people must also declare. The United Nations declared, but guess who else gotta declare? The people have to declare independence. If you don't declare it and then go and establish a constitution for the state, then you're wasting your time. Listen, I'm going to take my time. It's taking me a while to get through this, but that's okay. We're here to learn. Just no rush. Mindful of the determination proclaimed by the peoples of the world in the Charter of the United Nations. Pause right there. So the people, what is Resolution fifteen fourteen telling people? Go back and look at what? The Charter of the United Nations. Cause the General Assembly members, even though they wrote this, where are they deriving their power and authority? From the Charter of the United Nations, alright? So real quick, just click on it real quick. What I have up here, the Charter of the United Nations, chapter eleven. It's about what? Declaration regarding non-self-governing territories, which is colonial countries and peoples that's colonized. Then you read Article seventy-three and seventy-four that comes under chapter eleven. So Resolution fifteen fourteen derives its power and authority from the Charter, and the Charter talks about decolonization in Article seventy-three and seventy-four. Go back to Resolution fifteen fourteen. From the top. Mindful of the determination proclaimed by the peoples of the world in the Charter of the United Nations to reaffirm. You see that? Reaffirm, what were they reaffirming? The Charter had already given the language. Right? The Charter had already had specific language about decolonization. So therefore Resolution fifteen fourteen is reaffirming that same language. Remember what I told you? Resolutions and statutory law are nothing but addendums to the master contract. So Resolution fifteen fourteen is an addendum to what? The master contract of the Charter of the United Nations. So this is when they say reaffirming, they're going back and say, go back and read the master contract, then you'll understand how we derive the power to establish Resolution fifteen fourteen. Continue. So the Charter of the United Nations to reaffirm faith and fundamental human rights. You see that word fundamental? Fundamental human rights. Listen, what's fundamental human rights? You see the word fundamental? Look, look at the board. Fundamental law. So the Charter of the United Nations is not a constitution, but it operates similarly to a constitution, cause the constitution establishes what? Fundamental law. So the Charter of the United Nations said, go back and look at the fundamentals of human rights. So they're saying human rights is a fundamental right. It's universal law. Listen. You gotta understand the fundamentals. Moors don't understand fundamentals. Alright, so right here, Charter of the United Nations to reaffirm faith and fundamental human rights and the dignity and worth of the human person. Why did it say the human person? Okay. Because the state is a person. And then you got human persons. So you got the people and then the state. So the state is a person and people are persons, but when you're trying to be specific, you can say human person. You see that? So they're trying to tell you the country and the people have to become one. The country and the people have to become one underneath what? The state. We, the people, come under one name called the state. It's like a class action lawsuit. Make no difference how many parties there are to the suit. There's only one name on the docket under a class action lawsuit. That becomes the one person, i.e. the one party. You gotta understand this. These are fundamentals. Okay. So it's all about the work of human persons and the equal rights of men and women. Now, they qualify, what is a human person? See how they're writing? They qualify. What's a human person? Oh, it's the equal rights of men and women. They're making distinctions. Listen. And of nations, large and small. Now they're talking about what again? The state. And the nation, cause the nation is what? The state. So it's the states that are large and small. They're bringing them together. And to promote social progress and better standards of life and larger freedom. Where's your freedom derived from? It's derived from what? The nation which is the state. But who establishes the state? The men and women establish the country, i.e. the nation. You see that? Listen. Conscious of the need for the creation of conditions of stability. Gotta be stable, standards. Laws create stability. Laws create standards. Listen, conscious of the need for the creation of conditions of stability and well-being and peaceful and friendly relations based on respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of all peoples. And of universal respect for and observance of human rights, fundamental freedoms, for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion. All that is protected. Listen. Your race, sex, language, and religion is protected under what? Culture. What protects your culture? The state and its laws. Listen. Recognizing, who's recognizing? The General Assembly is recognizing the passionate yearning for freedom in all dependent people. And the decisive role of such peoples in the attainment of their independence. So you wanna go from being dependent to independent. Who's gonna help you with that? The United Nations. But first you gotta help yourself by establishing what? The state. Constitution. That's where it starts. Listen. Aware of the increasing conflicts resulting from the denial. Listen, this is important. Now they're starting to get into the real details. Listen. Cause first they start talking about what? People, state. Now they're starting to get into the details of what's keeping these people held up? What's keeping people hostage in their own land? What's keeping the people languished, languished in their own homeland, like Martin Luther King said? Listen. Aware, who's aware? The General Assembly members are aware of the increasing conflicts resulting from the denial of or impediments in the way of the freedom of such peoples which constitute a serious threat to world peace. You see that? Let's read it again. Aware, who's aware? The General Assembly members are aware of the increasing conflicts resulting from the denial of or impediments in the way of the freedom of such peoples which constitute a serious threat to world peace. So the United Nations is saying dependent people who are seeking independence are having conflicts with who? The colonizers. And the colonizers maintaining what? Denial or impediments. These are two very important words. Denial of or impediments. Why is that important to understand when they say denial of or impediments? They're making distinctions. You gotta pay attention. What is a denial? That's when they just, the colonists just say, no, we're denying you. But what's an impediment? That's when they put you on an obstacle course. They say, yeah, we kinda see what you're saying, but we're gonna take it a long route and delay, delay, and delay this thing. That's why they call it stall, deny, and defend. Stall, deny, and defend. So what's happening? The colonists either deny you or they create impediments. What's, what's an impediment? I'll give you an example. The CIA, the FBI, Homeland Security, Department of Justice, through their COINTELPRO operations will put copper-colored people amongst us who impede our progress cause our own people that look like us are telling us, nah, 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 let's not do it like that. Let's do it like this. What is it this? Oh, something about private law? Instead of talking about public law? So the FBI and the CIA will put impediments in our communities to get us off the wrong path of liberation. See, that's the biggest weapon that the FBI, CIA, Homeland Security, Department of Justice, et cetera. They use our own people to steve in candies, create impediments. And then when you go up and deal with their courts, the courts deal with denying. So if steve and candy can't stop you, then they use what? Use of force, deny through their laws and courts. And they'll tell you what you're saying is what? A belief. They'll tell you you're delusional. So when the colonists start talking like that, you know what they're saying? They're maintaining what? Imperialism. Imperialism, hegemony, and bigotry mentality of a colonist is to try to find denials and impediments, cause they know they can't stop you if you find out the truth. And once you find out the truth and you start enforcing it with your pen through the state, they can't stop you no more. That's what's happening. I had to take a moment to explain that. Why is the General Assembly members talking about denial and impediments? They know both are happening. And they also say what? It's a serious threat. It's a serious threat when the colonists are using denials and impediments. It's a serious threat. So if it's serious, guess what it's listed under? Crime. And so this, the United Nations lists something as serious, what they're saying is a criminal act. It's a crime against humanity. And this is why the General Assembly members opened up and said fundamental rights are about human rights. And when you violate human rights, that's a serious crime against humanity. So the United Nations is aware the colonists are doing this to colonize people. Let's continue. We'll come back to this. Listen. Considering the important role- Considering the important role of the United Nations in assisting the movement for independence and trust in non-self-governing territory. So who's supposed to help us? Who's obligated? Who took an oath to help us? It said, considering the important role of the United Nations in assisting the movement for independence and trust in non-self-governing territory. So who's got our back? The United Nations. But what did your so-called master teachers tell you? Oh, the United Nations is the devil. Hmm, are you an impediment? Are you an obstructionist? You're just denying your own people a right to learn about who really has our back? The United Nations. Listen. Recognizing that the peoples of the world ardently desire the end of colonialism in all its manifestation. What does ardently mean? That means passionate, serious. So people desire the end of colonialism in all its manifestation. This is the first page of the contract. The United Nations is saying colonialism is coming to an end. Did the Moors say that? No, the United Nations said colonialism is coming to an end. Now they have to do what? They gotta maintain the observation and application of their own contract. This is their contract they drafted. This is their contract they signed and gave their oath to assist indigenous people to do what? Be in the status of independence. But what is truly independent? The state first, then the people. Let's read it again. Recognizing, who's recognizing? The United Nations, General Assembly members, that the peoples of the world ardently desire the end of colonialism in all its manifestation. I mean, all manifestations. That means that even the United States, and there's several United States, if they got statutes that're trying to prevent Moors from decolonizing, guess what? Any statute, any law, any policy that the United States as a colonial power tries to invoke is considered what? A manifestation of what? Colonialism. The United States said, I mean, the United Nations said, all manifestations have to come to what? An end. All. All. And it say some, and it say in part. It said all, meaning in, in, in whole, all manifestations. Why do they use the word manifestations? See, that's a generic word. If it manifests.
It's a catch-all.
It's a catch-all word, it's a generic word. That means anything that's oppresses and suppresses and subjugates indigenous people. But in this example, Moroccans have been oppressed. Moroccans have been colonized and naturalized. So therefore, naturalization is a manifestation of colonialism. I'll say it again, naturalization is a manifestation of colonialism. Why? Because if the people have a desire, right? Because they wanna decolonize, and the United States says, well, you got to naturalize. You can't decolonize, you're, you're Americans. You can't turn around and say you wanna be Moroccan. Oh, excuse me, Mr. United States. You do realize that's a manifestation of colonialism of what you just said? Because you're trying to deny, it's a denial or an impediment of my human rights. And if you try to stop me, that's a serious crime, because that's a crime against what? Humanity, you see? So the United Nations is writing here, just in the preamble. But you gotta understand interpretations. Even naturalization is a form of colonialism. If in fact, you're trying to do what? Decolonize and then nationalize with your mother state. You wanna get rid of your foster mother, you wanna get rid of your adopted mother and go back to your biological mother, then the United States cannot stop you because they tried to stop you. That'd be what? A manifestation of what? Colonialism. And colonialism is coming to a what? End. Who said that? The United Nations. Now the people have to declare that as well. How do they declare? Well, they declare with what? Declaration of what? Independence backed up with what? The Constitution. You see? It's called due process. Listen. So the United Nations is convinced that the continued existence of colonialism prevents the development of international economic cooperation. Listen. The United Nations is convinced that the continued existence of colonialism prevents, that's that denial and impediment, prevents the development. Why, why do I have that highlight and stop right there? Because if you can't be at varying stages of advancement, then how can you ever develop? See? So the colonists is trying to prohibit, right? Under a phrase called, they're trying to supervene the impossibility of performance of Moors being at varying stages of advancement. So therefore, there's an impediment from the top. Convinced, who's convinced? The United Nations, member states are convinced that continued existence of colonialism prevents the development. If you can't develop, that means you're what? You, you're still colonized. You're not at varying stages of advancement. You can't emerge as a sovereign, independent state because someone's preventing it. That's called oppression. They're oppressing you. Subjugation. It's against the law. But you gotta catch this word right here, the first word they say, convinced. How can you be convinced if you don't have material evidence? Only way, the only way to be convinced, you must know it beyond a reasonable doubt. So listen how they continue with the sentence, watch this. Convinced that the continued existence of colonialism prevents the development of international economic cooperation impedes the social, listen. The social, cultural, and economic development of dependent peoples and militates. You see that word militates? Militates against the United Nations ideal of universal peace. So the United Nations is saying, on this word militates, that's a very important word. Moors must, must become wordsmiths. What is the United Nations saying about this word militates? What does militates mean? If the United Nations say they're convinced, what are they convinced? That means they got some evidence of what? Denials and impediments that who are doing? Colonial countries are doing to dependent people. Therefore, the word militate means what? It's a pattern of behavior that's provable. The United Nations has evidence that, that what? The colonists are maintaining this militate status under what? You ever heard the term called modus operandi? What does modus operandi mean in law? It means you're maintaining a pattern of behavior. A man who likes to rob, steal cars, he does that, he becomes career conditional. All he really does is specialize in stealing cars. That's your modus operandi. You like to steal cars, that's your thing. If you like to do identity theft, more than likely, you're gonna always do identity theft. That's your modus operandi. So what is the colonist's modus operandi? What is their pattern of behavior? Is to subjugate and oppress to create what? Denials and impediments to keep the people down, to keep them from emerging as a sovereign and independent state. So the United Nations got the evidence. And they say that evidence violates what? Principles of law. They say militates what? Against the United Nations. So they said, when colonists violate indigenous people's rights, it's a first violation of what? Against the United Nations. Charter. And it's also a violation of this resolution in itself. You see, the first violation in law was international. You're violating international law first. What are you violating second? Now you're violating the state rights of the indigenous people. The integrity of their domain. And you're violating the people's rights of state, state. So when the colonists are doing something to violate your rights, they're violating three people's rights. What's the first person's right they're violating? The United Nations. What's the second right they're violating? The name of the state, in Pamparako. What's the third violation? The people itself. They have violated three separate entities. This is what the United Nations is saying, is you're violating against the United Nations. You see that? This is plain language. Continue. Affirming that the peoples may for their own ends. Listen, this is important. Affirming that the peoples may for their own ends freely dispose of their natural wealth and resources without prejudice to any obligations arising out of international economic cooperation based upon the principle of mutual benefit and international law. What's the interpretation of that? Does that even make sense to that person? When you really say, well, what does that mean? What are they trying to say there? Okay, here we go. Listen. So the General Assembly members are affirming that peoples may for their own ends. What's own ends? To their own ends, money that make these ends meet. Listen. Affirming that peoples, what peoples? Because that's a generic word. Moroccan people in this example. Affirming that Moroccan people may for their own ends freely dispose of their natural wealth and natural resources. Who's that? In Pamparako, all of our resources, our minerals, anything that's in the land, in the sea, or in the air is ours for us to dispose of. Listen, from the top. Affirming that peoples may for their own ends. Well, who's the people first? The state. So who has the right first? First, first in line, first in time, is the state. They're talking about the state. The state has the power over what? All of what? The natural, the natural wealth and the resources. The state has that power first. Listen. Without prejudice, what's mean without prejudice mean? You can't prejudice the indigenous people's rights to lay claim to their own resources and their own land. And always remember, every state owns based upon their jurisdiction, two hundred nautical miles from the seashore. It's the jurisdiction of the state. So two hundred nautical miles from the seashore is also the jurisdiction of the people. So you got the land, you got the air, and the sea. It's all jurisdiction. So you got land law, you got air law, sea laws. Right? Listen, this is important. Our affirming that peoples may for their own ends freely dispose of their natural wealth and resources without prejudice to any obligations, listen, to any obligations, any obligations, any obligations arising out of international economic cooperation. What does that mean? You see, if the United States has signed a commercial contract, let's say it's with ExxonMobil, who's an NGO, ExxonMobil's an NGO, non-government organization, but they're in partnership with the United States. And they're taking the natural resources of the Moroccans. Then whatever commercial contract that ExxonMobil and the United States has together, guess what? It's gotta be amended. Because guess what they owe? They owe a percentage to the Moroccans. It's gotta be amended. Says who? The United Nations. Then guess who should back that up? The Moroccan people need to pass what? Statutory laws that supports what the United Nations said about the fact that what? Let's read it again. Affirming that peoples may for their own ends freely dispose of their own natural wealth and resources without prejudice to any obligations arising out of international economic cooperation. So any of those commercial contracts the United States has with someone else regarding this land, the seashore and the air, they owe the Moroccans a percentage. Now should the Moroccans shut them down? No. Guess what international law says? Listen what they say. So based upon what? Based upon what? The principle of mutual benefit. See, it's gotta be a mutual contract. Moroccans should seek through their constitution established statutory laws that forces the colonists to give us a percentage of those commercial contracts since they're taking our natural resources. That's our wealth. They owe us a percentage. They gotta amend those contracts without prejudice. It must be a mutual, a mutual, a mutual benefit if they're gonna do business in our land. Listen. And what supports it? And international law. So what's supporting the Moroccans? International law? Because international law says, it's gotta be a mutual benefit according to any commercial contracts that the colonists assign with other people. That's what the law says. Can't see what's happening, we're just in the preamble. Listen. The General Assembly members believing that the process of liberation is irresistible and irreversible and that in order to avoid serious crises, an end must be put to colonialism and all practices of segregation and discrimination associated therewith. They already know that decolonization creates a crisis. And they're telling the colonial states, you better maintain peace. You better maintain peace between yourself and the indigenous Moroccans who are doing what? Emerging as a sovereign and independent state. Listen. Believing the process of liberation. What's the process of liberation? It's a declaration of independence first, then the due process of what? Establishing a constitution because your father's due process of what? International law. International law supporting your constitution and your declaration of independence. You see? Listen. Believe that the process of liberation, because it's a due process, you gotta check some boxes. Is irresistible and irreversible. So the United States knows, Moroccans are not going to stop with the due process of decolonization. It's never going to stop. And if they try to do anything to do what? Create denials or impediments, it's already considered a serious threat. It's a crime against humanity. And it's a crime against the United Nations first. Because this is the law they came out with first, to protect indigenous people. Listen. Believe that the process of liberation is irresistible and irreversible and that in order to avoid serious crises, an end must be put to colonialism. The United Nations is saying. And all practices of segregation and discrimination associated therewith. Black people been screaming out loud, black lives matter. They ain't even read this not one time. Because they were finding out, first of all, I ain't no such thing as black people, that's not a nationality. And it's certainly not the name of a country. Is there a country called black? No. So where are you deriving your alleged rights from? The word rights means laws, express written laws. The word rights means laws, express written laws. Show me your express written laws, black people. It don't exist. So what the hell are you screaming and hollering about? Ain't nobody violating your rights. There ain't no such thing as black rights. There's American rights for all. Ain't no such thing as black rights. There ain't no such thing as a black country. Show me on the world map a state called black. It don't exist. Listen. Now look at the United Nations says welcoming the emergence. They're welcoming it. The United Nations said, we're welcoming indigenous people. See, that's friendly relations. The United Nations is welcoming the emergence in recent years of large number of dependent territories. What's that? Dependent what? Countries. Territory mean what? Country or state. So dependent states or dependent countries into freedom and independence. So what needs to be free? The state. The state needs to be free first. But the people vest the sovereignty into the state. The state is sovereign. Listen. Welcoming the emergence. What's emerging? They'll tell you. In recent years of large number of dependent territories. The territory is the state. The state must emerge into freedom. So the state must emerge into freedom. The state must be independent. You see that? Continuing. And recognizing increasingly powerful trends towards freedom in such territories, which have not yet attained what? Independence. So the territory must have independence. The state must be independent first. What's the title of this contract? Countries and people. So country came first, then people. But the people must create the country, i.e. the state. Listen. Convinced that all peoples have an able right to complete freedom. Not partial freedom. Complete freedom. What's complete mean? Independent and no longer what? Dependent. Convinced that all peoples have an enabled right to complete freedom. That word complete is very important. It's very important. Let's underscore that. To complete freedom. What's complete freedom? The entire state must have complete freedom first. The state must be completely free. Not part of your state, but the whole state. So when the colonists try to say, well, can we, can we still keep a percentage of this land? You say, no. Because the contract says what? Completing freedom. Can we share the land based on jurisdictions? Yes. You can be a tenant in common, but you gotta pay your property taxes. To who? The sovereign. That's what's happening right now. The sovereign state is independent. Listen. Because this is the word right here the United States is very concerned about. They don't like this word, complete. They want Moors to be dependent. So if this United States, America is a state, where do they want the Moors to be underneath them? Dependent. Where are the Indians? Indian reservations are where? Dependent as reservations underneath the United States, America. The United States, America is the sovereign state. The Indians are underneath the jurisdiction of the United States. They're dependent. So where does the United States want the Moors? To be underneath here too? This is why they got this huge push to tell black people they're Indians. So black people already here, listen to me. What's black people's status? They just naturalized under the jurisdiction of the United States of America. Here's black people. Then black people say, we're Indians. The United States says, yes. Because Indians are where? Still over here underneath the United States. So you ain't going nowhere fast. It's a lateral movement. You ain't going nowhere. You went from, you went from here to here. You went from here to here. You went from black to Indian. The foolishness. And this is what they're baiting black people who are Americans to say they're Cherokee. And black people are here as American citizens and Cherokee citizens are here. You still under the jurisdiction of the United States umbrella. You ain't going nowhere fast. The foolishness. So this right here, the United States hates this word. Complete freedom means you get to do what? Here's the United States, America. Guess where the Empire Morocco is? Here. As its own independent sovereign state. But watch this. Don't these look equivalent? Mm-hmm. So where's the Empire Morocco? Here. That's right. The United States, America. It's underneath the United, underneath the Empire Morocco. Let me clean it up. The United States, America as a state is dependent upon the Empire Morocco. Because the United States, America as a state recognized the Empire Morocco as a state as the sovereign independent state. But what's the distinction? The Empire Morocco allows all European states to get into what? Free association to go out and do business with other states on planet Earth. That's the only distinction. The Empire Morocco allowed the European states to get into free association, to get into commercial contracts to make money. And then they owe a percentage to the Empire Morocco. It's only distinction. We're talking jurisdiction. Listen. So the United States has a big problem with the word complete. Even though they already know that they, the United States, America is located where? In Morocco. So they already know that. Listen. Convinced that all peoples have enabled rights, complete freedom, the exercise of their sovereignty and the integrity of their national territory. What's the national territory? The state. The state has a right to what? Complete independence. The state is sovereign. It's the first entity, it's the first person that's independent. Then it brings all the people with it. You see? The United States, America, Empire Morocco. But the reality is, it's this. But the Empire Morocco allows the United States, America, to go out and perform commerce and bring it back to the sovereign independent state, which is the Empire Morocco. Pay your tithing to the Empire Morocco. Pay your taxes to the Empire Morocco. Pay your tariffs to the Empire Morocco. That's what the contract says. The treaties set forth this language. Listen. Read it again. Convinced that all peoples. So when it says all peoples, the United States don't like that word either. Because the United States tried to tell the United Nations, well, what do you mean all peoples? Do you mean people in Africa, in the islands? Are you trying to say even the Moors have a right to be colonized? You know, the United Nations in the ICJ told the colonial states, they said, yes. It says all people. That's plain language in a treaty. Plain language. It didn't say islanders. It didn't say Africa. It said all people that's what? Colonized. So what's the problem with the United States? Why are they so against decolonization? Why are the other Europeans against decolonization? Why were they okay with Africa decolonizing? Why were they okay with islanders decolonizing? It's because France and all the Europeans go back, quote unquote, home. They can leave Africa, go back to Europe. You see? They can leave Liberia, come back to the United States. But see, when Moors are decolonizing, the United States, America is in Morocco. Canada is in Morocco. Great Britain is in Morocco. Ireland is in Morocco. Denmark is in Morocco. Germany is in Morocco. France is in Morocco. Italy is in Morocco. Russia's in Morocco. Sweden is in Morocco. They ain't got nowhere to go. They can't go to Antarctica. They could leave Africa and go home. Now that their home is their primary residence, they gotta share the jurisdiction with the Moroccans. So it's a shared jurisdiction. This is the problem they're having. They don't want to share. But they have no choice. Because A, they signed treaties that agreed to it, such as the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six. And they're perfectly aware of international law. They have no choice but to cohabitate with the Moors. But what's the problem? They owe Moors taxes. They know Moroccan law is superior. In any dispute, Moroccan law is superior. Moroccan law is superior over American law. Moroccan law is superior over Canadian law. Moroccan law is superior over British law. This is what they don't like. So if your law's superior, that means also what? Your courts are superior. But they've always known that the Moors and the Empire Morocco own all the land. They agreed in all the treaties, the recognition of the Empire Morocco being the sovereign state. And all other states are in Morocco. I'm not talking about the Kingdom of Morocco. I'm talking about the Empire of Morocco. This is the problem they're having. Colonists technically don't have a problem with decolonization per se. The problem they have is the what? Geographical location of decolonization. It's the geographical location. Say, they don't mind Puerto Rico decolonizing. Because they'll just leave the island and quote unquote, come back home to the mainland. But when they get back to the mainland, they find out now the Moors are the sovereign. They like, well, heck, where do we go now? Nowhere. You write back where you started with the Moors. What's wrong with that? Nothing? Then why you keep making a problem out of it? Let me tell you why they make a problem of it. Because you have given all these quote unquote, white males, all this false sense of security that they're more superior than the black male. So now the United States gotta go back and tell the white male that they lied to them. The whole time, the United States is telling the white man that he's superior. And behind closed doors, the United States government is signing treaties with the Empire Morocco saying that the United States is subordinate, inferior to the empire, the Sultan and the Moors. They're signing treaties. Then they come back and tell the white man, you're superior over the negro. That was a lie the whole time. So it's not that the United States has an issue with Moors. The United States has an issue with themselves because they have lied to their own citizens for decades. So now they gotta explain themselves. Because they know the quote unquote, white citizens are gonna find out about these treaties. And the white citizens, you know how they are. They're gonna read. They're gonna say, wait a minute. It says right here, you, United States, agreed to all this. Is that correct? I see your signature. This is what Billy Bob is gonna tell the United States. Why did you sign this? And you agreed these Moors are the sovereigns? And then you come back and tell us these negroes ain't it. It's a false sense of security. This is why they go out of their way. And this is not all white people. I'm just talking in general. Let's just have straight talk, right? Can we have a straight talk? This is why you see the white male overly aggressive towards the black male. Because the white male been giving this false sense of security. So where's all this aggression coming from? It's because the United States government knows the truth of who these black males are. And the government of the United States is concerned that these black males are gonna find out who they are. So they got a bigger target on them to keep them suppressed, to make sure they never rise up to find out who they are. To always feel inferior to a white male. And it made the white male feel like he was superior as a false sense of security. Because the United States government has always known that the United States of America is inferior to the Empire Morocco. So therefore, we're talking crayons. Unfortunately, that means even the white male is inferior to the black male. That's what the contract says, not me. The United States been lying to their own people. And the white man, the average white citizen's gonna find out. And they ain't gonna be pissed at the Moors. They gonna be pissed at their own colleagues and constituents like they did on January sixth. When they stormed the Capitol. They gonna be pissed because they was lying to them. I had to say that for the record. Let's continue. Last sentence of the preamble. Silently proclaims the necessity of bringing to a speedy and unconditional end of colonialism. That's the end of what? White superiority. The United States has always known, this is nineteen sixty, that the end of the white quote unquote rule is over. So when they started doing it in the sixties, keep in mind, it's come out nineteen sixty. They started assassinating all of the black leaders. All the so-called messias. Because they knew it was over. So what did they do? They just kept lying to their white citizens. Knowing the whole time, this treaty of nineteen sixty said it's over for colonialism. But anytime you imagine who's a colonist, you think, hmm. They look a little bit like George Washington and John Adams. This is what you imagine when you close your eyes. Who's a colonist? Unfortunately, you get the image of who? The Indians call him who? The paleface. That's no disrespect to anyone. We're having a heart to heart conversation. Can we just keep it real? But let's be truly honest. The average white citizen knows that they are all immigrants. They'll tell you the story. Yeah, my great great grandmother came over here. You just admitted out loud that you're an immigrant. Then you get here, you start poking all of the copper colored people. And then you try to tell them, look, man, we colonized y'all. Stop bringing that stuff up. Oh. Oh, you wanna talk about the rule, what? The rule of law? But yet you want black people to abide by the law? I don't know why these black people just don't abide by the law. Why don't they just listen to the cops? Why don't you listen to the rule of law? Because when these treaties come out, I can't wait to see the average white citizen, who already knows they're immigrants, to read these Moors treaties. And they're gonna find out about the real rule of law. Because what's the rule of law? It's merely about what? What law rules? And what law rules? International law. Treaty law. And the fundamental law of the Moroccans constitution. As well as the statutory laws of Moroccan law and the common law of Moroccan law. The Moroccan courts, especially Consular Court, rules. And that's what the contract says. Ain't got nothing to do with your complexion. It's the contract. You wanna talk about something black or white? Look at the contract. Let's read it again. Silently proclaimed. So the United States was there in nineteen sixty. Great Britain was there. Canada was there. Ireland was there. Denmark was there. Spain was there. Portugal was there. Netherlands was there. France was Portugal was there. Netherlands was there. France was there. Germany was there. Russia was there. Italy was there. You name it. They were all there in nineteen sixty. So they know what's up. You think that stopped them from still telling their citizens that they were superior over the Moors? They didn't stop them. Cause they kept that lie going. Cause they don't know how to stop lying because it's gonna turn on them. So they're deflecting it onto the quote unquote black man. Instead of them turning on themselves saying, look, we gotta confess. We know that the black man is actually the Moor and the Moors are sovereign. More particularly, the Empire Morocco sovereign, which gave the Moors sovereignty. They're not inferior to us. They're actually superior to us. From a law perspective. And the European states have not been able to muster enough energy to say it out loud, to confess. So they have waited to the last minute. This is why you've been watching them in the last five or 10 years. They've been slowly but surely uh uh giving diamonds and artifacts back to Africa. France is leaving Africa. The United States is allowing Puerto Rico to decolonize. The United States is slowly but surely letting the American Samoa Islands decolonize. Slowly but surely Europeans are saying, see, we can all get along. We gonna give your stuff back. Oh, because see, they know that time is running out, that the Moors are getting ready to wake up. And when the Moors wake up, the Moors have sovereign power. Sovereign power. No one has more power than the sovereigns here, the Moors treaties and the Empire Morocco. You gotta understand this. So all the prime ministers and presidents of the European states, it's time to slowly but surely tell their citizens the truth. This is why Putin decided to say, oh, I was just walking around and I was like, I was in my boat and I was like, huh. There was that picture of Jesus. It's time. I'm gonna go over here and blow the dust off of it. And look, Jesus is black. Really? Oh, you just not gonna tell us that Putin? I'm not against Putin. I'm not for Putin. I'm keeping it real. I'm talking about his actions. You think he didn't already know about those portraits and paintings decades ago? Why is he bringing it out now? Cause he knows the Moors are waking up. And I ain't talking about the sellout Moors who created denial and impediments. I ain't talking about your Stephen Candy Moors. I'm talking about the competent authority of the Empire Morocco, his master sultan and the Moors government. Putin knows. And he's telling all the other Europeans, y'all better get ready. Putin is telling the world, oh, y'all wanna, y'all wanna pick on me? This is Putin saying, oh, y'all wanna pick on me? We're over here in the east. Of Europe? I tell you what. Yup. You better get ready for the Moors. Cause the Moors are gonna start in the west first. By the time the Moors get down to United States of America, and it trickles over into Canada, from Canada over to Ireland, Ireland to Great Britain. From Great Britain, it's gonna jump over to France, Germany, and it's just gonna keep going eastbound. By the time it gets to Putin, Putin's like, I tried to tell you, it's gonna start with y'all first. Y'all sitting here picking on me, talking about some NATO, you better get ready for the Moors. Cause they are back. Putin knows. Listen. Alright, guess what? Let's read the articles. Okay. Uh, from the top. And to this end declares that.
And to this end declares that, one, the subjection of peoples to alien subjugation, domination and exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights. Is contrary to the Charter of the United Nations and is an impediment to the promotion of world peace and cooperation. Two, all peoples have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social and cultural development. Three, inadequacy of political, economic and social or educational preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. Four, all armed action or repressing measures of all kinds directed against dependent peoples shall cease in order to enable them to exercise peacefully and freely their right to complete independence. And the integrity of their, uh, excuse me, integrity of their national territories shall be respected. Excuse me. Five. Three, immediate steps shall be taken in trust in non-subordinate territories or all other territories which have not yet attained independence to transfer all powers to the peoples of those territories without any conditions or reservations in accordance with their freely expressed will and desire without any distinction as to race, creed or color in order to enable them to enjoy complete independence and freedom. Six, any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity and the territorial integrity of a country is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations. Seven, all states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the Present Declaration on the Basis of Equality, Non-Interference in the Eternal Affairs of All States and Respectful of the Sovereign Rights of All Peoples and the Territorial Integrity.
Alright, so that's the end of the reading of just seven short articles. You got less articles than you have a preamble. So the preamble is the mindset of the United Nations. They're telling you what's really on their mind, like I did tonight. I just simply told you what's on my mind, just keeping it real. And then the articles start to now get into what? Substance. Right? The articles, but always remember the preamble is the first page of the contract. You can enforce the preamble language just as much as the articles itself. You can enforce both. They both have standing in law. The preamble words is law. See? So all that stuff about colonialism coming to a speedy end, that's law. And then you get into the seven articles. Alright, let's break down the seven articles. Okay, here we go. Alright, Article One out of seven. Number one. The subjugation of peoples to alien subjugation. Come. So the subjugation of peoples to alien subjugation. So they turn people into aliens. But what does that mean? You see, when you naturalize people, first you have to strip them of their nationality. And then you adopt the people. So first, the subjugation of people. So the peoples in this example were Moroccans. And the Moroccans were subjugated people now went into an alien's political status. Because they have to list you as alien first. What does alien mean? Mean they don't know who your mama is. Who's your mama? Tell me the name of your state. So they stripped the Moors and the word Moors, a short title for Moroccan. So they stripped you of your nationality of Moroccan and give you the status of alien. So you go from a nationality and you're subjugated down to alien, which means unknown. You're a John Doe. They put you on the alien. Unknown what? Nationality. But that's a lie. Then they bring you back up to what status? Citizen status. Under naturalization, cause you've been adopted, now they call you American. That way they have what? Jurisdiction over you. They become your adopted parents. Don't your adopted parents have legal rights over you? So right here. The subjugation of Moroccans to aliens. And then they went from aliens and then it was called what? Americans. So the Moroccans were turned into Americans. And now you gotta go from being American, go back to being Moroccan. So as long as you keep calling yourself American, you're maintaining your own dang own subjugation. You see that? Listen. One, the subjugation of Moroccans to alien subjugation, domination and exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights. It's a human right to go back home to your mama. If you've been adopted, that's fine. But you got a right to go seek out your biological mother and come under her protections. Listen. Human rights is contrary to the Charter of the United Nations. So let's get a nice clean read from the beginning. The subjugation of peoples to alien subjugation, domination and exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights is contrary to the Charter of the United Nations. So what law are you breaching first? What law is the United States violating first when they deny the Moors their human rights to emerge as a sovereign independent state? The first law they're breaching is what? International law. You see? That's why it's up there first. International law protects the Moors' state rights while they go into what? Varying stages of advancement of what? Decolonization. It's a due process of liberation. It doesn't happen overnight. So who's got our back during the due process of liberation? International law. And who oversees international law? The United Nations member states. The United Nations under international law helps the Moroccan state to be enforced the treaties of the Empire Morocco. So when the Empire Morocco is trying to enforce the treaties on the United States of America, who comes in to help support as a referee to make sure the United States of America abides by the treaties? Cause the state of the Empire Morocco is trying to enforce it. You see, the United Nations will assist us. Listen. From the top. Number one, the subjugation of peoples to alien subjugation, domination, exploitation constitutes a denial. See that word denial popped up? A denial of fundamental human rights is contrary to the Charter of the United Nations. And is an impediment. Oh, the word impediment just popped back up. So you got the word denial and impediment. In Article One. It's against the law. What law? International law. That's one of the five elements of law. So in a dispute, you say, okay, if that's the rule of law, then what law rules? Well, it depends on the dispute. Cause the dispute is based on the subject matter. The subject matter is decolonization. Then what do you use? International law. That has jurisdiction. But who's enforcing international law? The state is enforcing international law. You see? Because individuals can enforce treaties, only the state can't. Listen. From the top, the subjugation of peoples to alien subjugation, domination, exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights, contrary to the Charter of the United Nations and is an impediment to the promotion of world peace and cooperation. So colonialism is a serious threat to world peace. Therefore, they listed on a crime, what? Against humanity. It's a serious crime. It's not a civil case. It's a criminal case. And in criminal cases, people get what? Fines and jail time. You see? So what are they warning the United States of America about? You might end up in jail. Cause it's a crime. Listen. Number two. All peoples have the right. What people have the right? All peoples have a right. But the word peoples is generic. So it means all Moroccans. Once they pledge their allegiance to the state by application. Right? So all peoples, all Moroccans have the right to self-determination. But what, what has to self-determination first? The state. That's what's sovereign. It ain't you as an individual. People are not sovereign. The state is sovereign. Then the state extends sovereignty to the people, but the people have a limited sovereignty because the people gave full sovereignty to what? The state and the constitution to make sure the next generation can take over the sovereignty. If the sovereignty was only in your mother and father and they die, guess where the sovereignty went? To the grave. So the sovereignty is vested, vested into the constitution that makes it what? Repeatable, duplicatable and transparable for the inheritance of the next generation under the same constitution. It is the will. It is the trust. It is the deed. Listen. Number two, all peoples have the right to self-determination by virtue of that right. They freely determine their political status. There's that political word again. What's the political status? The state. And freely pursue their economic, social and cultural development. So it's all about us. We as Moroccans under the constitution, we get to determine our political status. We get to determine our economic status. What is that saying here? The colonists can't determine it for us. They gotta stay out the way. It's not their decision to make. And this is why I always tell Moors, we as Moors have delayed our own justice because this treaty has been out since nineteen sixty. Sixty-five years and Moors run around blaming the white man for all our problems. Shut the hell up. And read the damn contract and apply it. Listen. Two, all peoples have the right to self-determination by virtue of that right. They freely determine their political status. We have to do that for ourselves. And freely pursue their economics and their social and their cultural development. It was all on us. That's why we have to take accountability of us. Stop deflecting and blaming other people. You wanna blame the Pope? You wanna blame the paper fools? You wanna blame colonialism? You wanna blame the white man? You wanna blame everybody but yourself? It starts with us first. What's the problem? We were miseducated as a people. Our own people that look like us told us we was black. Our own people that look like us told us we was African-American. Our own people that look like us told us we was pet Africans. Our own people that look like us told us we was African-Americans and Martian-Americans and Indians. Our own people are telling us these non-degiers. Our own people are telling us these misnomers. Our own people are doing this to us. We're not Martian-Americans. We're Moroccans. And Noble Drali tried to tell us. You think they assassinated Noble Drali because he was running around saying he's American? They assassinated Noble because he said he was Moroccan. And as soon as they assassinated him, what happened next in nineteen thirty? All these black associations popped up. What did the Grand Sheiks do? Say, oh, we're American. We're Americanized. The great sellout. And you got so-called Grand Sheiks to this very day of January twenty twenty-five running around telling everybody we're Americans and that's a damn lie. You are a naturalized American. That's your stepmama. That's your foster mother who claimed you. You were supposed to return to Morocco and pledge your allegiance to the Empire Morocco to be Moroccan again. Noble tried to tell you and that's why he lost his life. And you disrespect him by saying that Noble Drali is American. He tried to tell you he ain't Cherokee and he ain't American, that he is a descendant of Moroccans. And you throw dirt on his name when you call him American. Run around here talking about the one-on-ones, saying that our nationality is Moorish-American. Who wrote it? Cause Noble said we're Moroccans. So who the hell wrote the one-on-ones to say that our nationality is Moorish-American? You know who wrote it? Grand Sheiks. After they assassinated Noble Drali on behalf of the CIA and FBI. What's the CIA stand for? Counterintelligence. That's what's happening. We've been sold out. We've been sold out by Grand Sheiks on the civic side and the temple side. We've been sold out by ministers of mosque. We've been sold out by pastors and reverends. The religious corporations have been controlling the narrative of the Moors. Their job was to maintain the denial and impediment of our liberation. That was their job on behalf of the CIA and FBI. You got to understand what's happening. Think about who your leader is in your community. Think about where they came from. They came from a church. Either they already in the church running the show or they came from the church and now they running the show. Who's your mayor? Your mayor came from some church. You see what I'm saying? Now, I got nothing against religion. I have something against Stephen Candies of the world. And Stephen Candy just so happened to come from the church. Listen. Number three. Number three, inadequacy. Listen. Inadequacy of political, economic, social, or educational preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. Let me read it again. Inadequacy of political, economic, social, or educational preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. Let me read it again, but I'm going to condense it. Listen. Inadequacy of political preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. So the United States can't say, well, these Moors ain't really ready to run their own government. That's none of your damn business, United States, what Moors do amongst Moors. But what's another reason why I'm pausing on this section? Three. This is something I like to have a public announcement of. You see this word inadequacy? What's the definition? Definition of inadequacy. No.
Inadequate. An adjective. One, lacking the quality or quantity required, insufficient for a purpose of a person unable to deal with a situation or with life.
One more time.
Inadequate. It's an adjective, lacking the quality or quantity required, insufficient for a purpose.
Oh, so inadequate. This is what the United Nations is saying. The word inadequate, they're using it there being specific, means lacking a quality or quantity required. So inadequacies means quantity required. So inadequacies, if you were adequate, you were adequate, you would have the quantity required. But inadequate means, well, you might not have the quantity required. Listen. So Section Three says inadequacy of political, meaning the state and the government. Listen. I'm going to make a point here. I'm making a public service announcement in just a moment. Number three, inadequacy of political preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. So not only can the United States can't say, well, they don't, they only got seven people in their state. Oh, but the state is what? One person. What's a state? A state is a person in international law. So it's really only one person. The country is technically one person. So when you hear these fools out here turn around saying, man, you can't have no state with five or seven people. You gotta have a million people to be a part of your state. Who keeps talking like that? His name is who? Abdullah Il Talib Mosse Bay coming on his duly. And duly keeps running around telling the Moors, oh, man, Jay Bay and them, they lying to y'all, man. Jay Bay and them talking about they got five or seven people in their state. You can't have no state with seven people. Well, wait a minute, duly. Mr. Etymology? Did you look up the word inadequacy? Mr. Etymology? Because right here, international law, I'm using what? The rule of law to make my legal arguments. Duly. Okay, duly. Inadequacy of political, meaning the state and its government, inadequacy of political requirements, because he say you're required to have a million people to have a state, but guess what international law says? Duly. It says inadequacy of political preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. You see what duly is doing? He's trying to do what? Be an impediment. He's trying to establish denial and he's lying to all the Moors. Because the only person that matters in laws was the person, one person, state, she by herself. It ain't got nothing to do with how many people in your population, fool. Because international law does not recognize population as a required number. There's no prerequisite of how many people does it need to be in a state? There's no prerequisite. There's no pretext. This is what the rule of law says. So what law rules over duly and his foolishness? International law. Let me read it again. Duly. Inadequacy of political, which means the state and its government, preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. But wait a minute, since duly say he's Mr. Etymology, let's put that into Etymology Dictionary. Okay. Okay, Mr. Etymology. All right, here we go. Look at the origin of the word. Oh, Moors love to talk about etymology. Okay. Inadequacy. Incompleteness, ineffectiveness, state or quality of being insufficient. So if inadequate, you're insufficient, right? So duly keeps running around saying, oh, these, Jay Bay and all these people claiming to have Moroccan states, they're inadequate because they don't have enough population. He keeps saying you need a million people to have a state. But the reality is international law says what? They disagree with duly. Listen. Let's go back now to the treaty. Treaty Supreme Law of the Land, not duly. It says right here, number three, inadequacy of political, which means the state and government and population, preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. United States can't stop you and neither can these Moorish Americans. Now, I think it's sad because duly supposed to be the best student that Taj Reebay ever produced and even duly have missed concepts. The Moorish Americans are done. I'm telling you right now, Moorish Americans don't know nothing about international law. This is why they remain colonized. And then soon as they see the next Moor that's starting to rise up a little bit, it becomes crabs in a barrel. And they can't even have a proper legal argument. What's your proper legal argument, duly? Show me the law. Stop just bumping your gums talking about, oh, man, they can't have six or seven people in colonized state. Where's the law? Pull out the law, duly. Show the people the law. Stop running your mouth. See, I'm showing what? The rule of law. The rule of laws. What law rules? Is international law. Then what? Treaty law. Then it's constitutional law. Then it's statutory law. Then it's common law. We'll talk about that. Listen. So in other words, let's get back to the United States because that's what's relevant. Number three, inadequacy of political preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. So the United States can't stop us and neither can duly or any of the Moorish Americans. Let's continue. Number four. All. Listen. All. Listen. All armed action or repressive measures of all kinds directed against dependent peoples shall cease. In order to enable them, the Moroccans, them, to exercise peacefully and freely their right to complete independence and the integrity of their national territory shall be respected. Let's read it again. All armed action or repressive measures of all kinds directed against dependent peoples shall cease. In order to enable them to exercise peacefully and freely their right to complete independence and the integrity of their national territory shall be respected. Those are powerful words. The United Nations is telling the United States of America and all other colonial states that their belligerence shall cease. Listen. Number four. All. Listen. All repressive measures of all kinds. What's a repressive measure? That's when the United States and their lower courts try to use their procedures and their statutes to do what? Oppress and subjugate to deny and create impediments to keep Moroccans down, to keep them from emerging as a sovereign independent state. When the police, the prosecutor, the judge, and the public defender turn around and tell you, oh, that's just a belief. Oh, that's patently frivolous. Soon you start telling that you're Moroccan and you can prove it because now you got support from your Moroccan state. Your state is coming in to help represent you when they pull you into a jointer, right? What's a jointer? That's when the lower courts bring both who? Yeah, the who? The plaintiff and defendant is in a jointer in front of the court. They've been joined together as parties to a docket, i.e. to a suit, whether it's civil or criminal. It's a jointer. It immediately becomes a fraudulent jointer when the prosecutor who's representing as the plaintiff tries to tell a Moroccan that they don't believe what the Moroccan is saying, even though the Moroccan has put forth what? Material evidence through a preliminary objection that challenges the court and challenges the plaintiff. It becomes a fraudulent jointer when the lower courts try to force American laws onto a Moroccan. It's fraud and it's a crime. It's called what? Anytime American judges or prosecutors are trying to force American law on a Moroccan and that Moroccan state is now supporting that Moroccan to tell the state, let's use Texas, state of Texas and Texas prosecutor and Texas judge are trying to bring this jointer against a Moroccan and that Moroccan state represented the consul general of the Empire Morocco or their internal state is now supporting that Moroccan. If the lower courts, the prosecutor, right, try to force a Moroccan into the jurisdiction of America, that's called what? Extra territoriality jurisdiction. Anytime they try to pull a Moroccan back into the jurisdiction of American jurisdiction, that's extra territoriality jurisdiction, meaning the United States is grabbing a Moroccan and trying to pull that Moroccan into the American jurisdiction. Extra territoriality jurisdiction, meaning you're forcing a Moroccan back into American jurisdiction. That's a crime. That's a forced jointer. That's subjugation. That's a violation of human rights of a Moroccan, a recognized Moroccan. Listen. All repressive measures of all kinds directed against dependent peoples shall cease. Why does it need to cease? Well, you gotta give dependent people a chance to what? Emerge. It says right here, in order to enable Moroccans to exercise peacefully and freely their right to complete independence. But if you keep maintaining denials and impediments as a colonist, how can the people emerge? Therefore, the United Nations General Assembly and international law says all that colonialism and all its manifestations shall cease. You see that? You understand what's happening here? Rahm Emanuel, the mayor of Chicago from twenty twelve, tried to tell the Moors, all your rights are guaranteed in the Charter of the United Nations. And when you read the Charter of the United Nations, it tells subjugated people you needed a state, i.e. a country, that way the country could declare its independence and establish a constitution because only states can be parties to international law and treaties. Only states can enforce your what? Fundamental rights or fundamental laws. Listen. Number five, we're almost done. Number five, immediate steps. Listen. This is another thing the United States don't like. They hate this word immediate. Listen. Immediate steps shall be taken and trust in non-self-governing territories or all other territories which have not yet attained independence to transfer all powers to the peoples of those territories without any conditions or reservations in accordance with their friendly expressed will and desire without any distinctions as to race, creed, or color in order to enable Moroccans to enjoy complete independence and freedom. Now, the colonists have a problem with this word called immediate. They say, well, if we gotta transfer, if we gotta transfer all powers to the peoples of their state, well, when do we have to do that? That's the question of the colonists. Well, the United Nations said immediately. Okay, how do you define the word immediate? That's the question. So the colonists say, well, what does immediate mean in terms of law? We're talking intertemporal law, time and placement. One of the colonists supposed to hand the keys to indigenous people. That's the question. Well, the answer is in the same paragraph. Immediate is based in the timeframe that the Moroccans set forth. So if the time is immediate, immediate can be defined, say, today. Or immediate can say on or before thirty days from now. That's immediate because I gave you thirty days. That's immediate. That's a timeframe. Or immediate can say, uh, on or before, uh, one hundred and eighty days from today. That's called immediate because you just set forth a timeframe. That's immediate. In other words, the Moroccans determine what the timeframe is in order to define what the word immediate means because it did not say what immediate is defined as. You must define the word immediate, uh, putting it into what? Your political discussions with the colonists. You gotta tell a colonist what the definition of immediate is. And that's on a case-by-case basis. For everything we do during our varying stages of advancement, we tell them, here's a timeframe when we need you to exercise your obligations to the contract to transfer all powers to the people. You see what's happening? So the answer to the word immediate is in this paragraph. Listen, you're hearing. It tells you who gets to determine what immediate means. So from the top, number five, it says, immediate steps shall be taken and trust in non-self-governing territories or all other territories in general which have not yet attained independence to transfer all powers to the people of those territories without any conditions or reservations. Now it comes to timeframe. In accordance with Moroccans freely expressed will. So whenever the will of the Moroccans tell the United States of America what the timeline is. So whenever the will of the Moroccans tell the United States of America what the timeline is, that's when the word immediate becomes the time. You see? But first, the Moroccans have to check a whole bunch of boxes. Basically, international law, due process. The fundamental law says we have to have a constitution and start to go through the due process to put together the state first, government. Right? Some laws. Right? You have to put together your judicial branch. You have to start operating as a government and tell the United States, "Yeah, we got it from here. We're ready now to do what?" Governing over who? Moroccans. But in any dispute, do we merely deal with who? The Americans as an example because the Empire Morocco is vast. And I'm gonna use the Americans as example. So how do you govern over Americans? Well, you start to invoke the treaties. The treaties already have expressed language in the treaties that start the basic fundamentals of what we're supposed to do as Moroccans in the governance of all states that are in Morocco. It starts with the treaties first. Number six. This is important. "Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity of the territorial integrity of a country is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations." Did you catch what just happened? Listen, number six, "Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity and the territorial integrity of a country." See, they're getting close to the end of the reading of contract. They're telling you, "These Moors needed a country because the only thing that the United States can violate and be found guilty of is they violate your country's rights." Moors have been trying to fight through a temple. Moors have been trying to fight through a church. Moors have been trying to fight this through a corporation and association. Wrong answer. You needed what? A country. Let's read from top. Number six, "Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of a national unity and the territorial integrity of a country." Isn't that plain language? Do the Moorish Americans have a country? No. Ain't no such thing as Moorish America. Ain't no such thing as Pan-Africa. You ever heard of a state called Pan-Africa? Anybody's nationality called Pan-Africa? No, it don't exist. You need a country and the country then tell you what your nationality is. It's Moroccan. Number seven. As it starts to close out. "All states shall observe faithfully and strictly." "All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations and the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the Present Declaration." So let's read it again. "All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations." "All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the Universal Declaration of Human Rights." "All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the Present Declaration on the granting of independence to colonized countries and peoples." You see that? It's strict. That's plain language. What does strict mean? There's no workaround. Ain't no maybes. Ain't no if. It's just strict. It's black letter of the law. So the rule of law, what law rules is international law under what subject matter? Decolonization. When you invoke the word decolonization, that sets forth certain obligations that are strict. You see that? But what did Moors need first? A country, i.e. a state. So the United States never had to respect Moors because Moors wasn't respecting themselves to emerge as a sovereign, independent country called the Empire of Morocco. Listen. "All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and the Present Declaration on the basis of equality, non-interference in the internal affairs of all states." What's a state? A country. "And respect for the sovereign rights of all Moroccan peoples and their territorial integrity of their state, i.e. of their country." You see this? This been out since nineteen sixty. Sixty-five years ago. Let me ask you a question. You ever heard Louis Farrakhan reading this out loud? No. You ever heard Tajri Bay reading this out loud? No. Now, these are so-called master teachers. But they ain't even reading universal law. This is the law of nations. Nations came up with this agreement. But you know why Louis Farrakhan can't read it out loud? Because he lying to you, telling you that you're black. You know why Tajri Bay can't read it out loud? Because ain't no such thing as Moorish American as a nationality. So therefore, this treaty does you no good. Because ain't no Moorish America country. You see what's happening? This stuff is easy if you read it. But somebody gotta tell the truth. And that's the problem that the colonists are having. They don't want to tell the truth. So they hire all these Stephen Candies to assist them with the denial and impediments. But those days are over. We shall decolonize. Who shall decolonize? The Empire Morocco and the head of state, his master Sultan, along with the three princes, government of the Moorish government and its peoples whose nationality is Moroccan. And anything to the contrary is not standing. I end with that. Peace long.